All right, it is five o'clock, so let's call this meeting to order. This is the January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five meeting for the Kettas County Public Hospital District Number One, Regular Board of Commissioners meeting. Do we have an approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Matt.
Second.
Second.
Second from Erica. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 I too will vote aye, any opposed? That motion passes. Next, we have consent agenda, if you have a chance to review the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion when anyone that is ready.
Move to approve.
Motion from Erica.
Second.
Second from Bob. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
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 I too will vote aye, any opposed? That motion passes. So we are on to public comments and announcements. So if there's anyone in the audience who would like to provide us with public comments, so I'll ask when you come up, just if you can state your name and where you're from, and we typically limit it to, to three minutes, and just be advised that the board does not tend to respond directly to public comments. We certainly hear them, we embrace them, we will take that information and do what we can if it's something we need to look into, but do not expect immediate responses to the comments made during public session here. So, yeah, come on up, thank you.
All right, thank you, uh, my name is Mark Eastwood. Where at, sixty-sixty, I just pop, well, in the Hollinsburg, Washington. Um, so, pardon me, you have to get emotional. Um, so I'm addressing, I'm just gonna read it, and just have some leeway. That, that way, you kind of get a full scope of what myself and some other people went through. Um, so I'm addressing you this evening due to observations that were made by myself and others. When a fellow retired firefighter, Lieutenant Dave Jones, was treated here at KVH Hospital for a stroke. Now, um, here's some background about people who made the observations. Uh, Bob Butterfield, three-year fire, retired firefighter. He worked as a paramedic, EMT, on a paramedic EMT unit. Same with Bob Venera, who's a, who's a retired, three-year firefighter. Lauren Venera, uh, three to five years volunteer. And then Ashley Richards, um, girlfriend, and myself. Um, I have twenty-three years with, uh, with fire, fire. So typically, when a firefighter calls nine-one-one, it's pretty serious. On December eleventh, he called because he was just feeling off. Um, he was having some symptoms, he walked, he walked downstairs. Um, he just feeling really dizzy, really off. Um, the unfortunate thing is, it's like, when you're dealing with strokes, you don't know when the last known well is. So it's like the anti-clock busting therapies may not be appropriate. But, uh, one thing you didn't comment that I heard is, um, don't take me to KVH. Well, uh, Kittetas County policy is, it's like transport to the closest facility. Um, and that's, I'm not sure if that's in good or not, with KVH. Um, but on Wednesday, the eleventh, uh, got called, and, um, he called nine-one-one, they run in here. Um, other firefighters were called, all came in as well, and those are the other people that I mentioned. So, um, let's see, on December twelfth, he had a neuro eval quiz. He was alert one times three, speaking full sentences, answering questions appro- appropriately, with a GC as a fifteen. Um, so no deficits were noted, except for swallowing issue. Um, mobility, mobility test was performed, and, uh, basically was given a walker and told to walk around, and he was just flying around the room, he would have given anybody the money for their money. Um, cardiac eval with imaging was completed, it was already being talked about, about releasing him either two weeks to a rehab center or, um, a couple days of physical rehab at home. So it was noted, uh, by Bob Venera, that Dave was clearing his throat more than normal. After lunch, it was like every two to three seconds, uh, Dave was clearing his throat, which was a little bit progressive in the symptoms that he was having. And that was the only symptom he was having, is a difficult to clear his throat. So, uh, people were, uh, asked to leave at seven P M., which, I mean, considering Dave was up for that entire period, from like Tuesday to Thursday, um, it's like he needed to get some sleep. So on Friday, December thirteenth, Kettas Valley Fire Church, um, was called by staff about, uh, one and a half hours after she left, which was about eight, nine o'clock, indicating that the, that things went sideways. And typically, when you hear things go sideways, it's like the thing, well, something screwed up. But I'm not, I'm not saying that things were screwed up, or how things progressed, but, um, I mean, just the wording was off. Um, so, in about a four-hour condition, uh, he did, he deteriorated. Um, it was described as Bob Venera. So when Bob came in on Friday, um, it was described by Bob Venera as the worst case of CHF patient he had ever, uh, ever seen. Um, and Ashton said it was going on for about, about two hours. So, um, it was noted by the day nurse, um, after, uh, turnover was by the night nurse. Uh, the night nurse, uh, was kind of concerned about gurgling, um, that he or she was hearing, I'm not sure if it was male or female. Um, it was thought that she heard that, so that, it was said that, uh, she thought she heard movement in the lungs when she was listening to, um, and basically listened to the lungs, uh, she thought she heard something, the decision was to, uh, give out Burellol. So, uh, a Burellol, decision to give out Burellol was made, uh, this, this, of course, if you've never taken, now, it kind of aggravates, uh, patients sometimes. Um, and so the doctor decided to, uh, supposedly give him Lorazepam, calm down, and that has an eighteen-hour shelf, or a half-life. For some reason, they gave him, um, Lamictine. Uh, the half-life of this is approximately thirty, thirty hours, and varies between twenty-one to fifty-four hours. So, uh, the nurse would ask, it's like, well, how can you give him such a long-acting drug? Um, the paramedics I've talked to, the other professionals that I've talked to, is like, when you have a stroke patient or neurologic patient, you don't want to sedate him so long that you're not able to do cognitive or neu- neural, uh, neuro exam. And in this case, it's like, it's gonna be a long time before they can assess i- if he's getting better or worse. Long, and it was also indicated that that would take until Sunday to get, uh, this medication out of his system. Uh, the respiratory therapist indicated Dave's airway is not secure, and he needed to be innovated. So this was the first time, so we all realized that care at KVH, um, that care needed to be a little bit more than, than what you could, could provide. Uh, we started making arrangements for transport to other hospitals, dark, uh, we're gonna hold off on, uh, the doctor's name, but the doctor, um, in a hospital legal would not let him move because there could be, uh, no power of attorney, um, determined. So during this timeframe, now until Sunday, the following occurred. So the doctor even thought, reading was so concerned, he pulled the nurse out of the OB to sit in the room and look after Dave, because he was having difficulty, difficulty clearing his throat. Bob Venera and Ashley Richards, uh, took shifts to make sure suction continued throughout, throughout the night, the night. So as of Saturday, he was thirty hours of being non-responsive. Uh, they hung a bag of ringers in place to flush the drugs out of his system. Um, the second respiratory ther- respiratory therapist came in, first stated his airway is not secured, and he should be innovated. In the afternoon on Saturday, Swedish agreed to take him when a bed opened up. So that's kind of the issue with transporting patients, I understand that. So after one P M., a comment was overheard from one nurse saying to another nurse that these apnea events have me concerned. So we're, we're having a respiratory therapist, nurses, indicate that there's something, that there's an issue here that needs to be addressed. Sick, at six P M. on Saturday, a plug-up apneic event occurred. Um, unsure yet, the sitter wasn't in the room, heard that the sitter left the room. Um, it was, uh, and they were supposed to be washing, washing their airway. So a nurse was fetched at this time, and a nurse said to Bob Venera, go to the nurses' station and have them get respiratory therapist ASAP. So the third respiratory therapist showed up and stated, he should have been innovated, that's the third time. So the respiratory therapist suctioned Dave out, no innovation as of yet. And I'm not sure why the doctor didn't take three people's advice and innovate this patient. Suctioning took, uh, thank you very much for allowing me additional time. Uh, suctioning took longer than the respiratory therapist would have liked, and there was no proper equipment in the room he would use to appropriately suction Dave out. With, with this net, uh, with this issue now, for Dave, why wasn't there appropriate treatment available? So, um, let's see. So forty hours now being on respiratory distress, um, so his lungs were clear. So the lower lungs were clear, it's a upper, upper airway obstruction, and I can see how the nurse, I mean, it's hard to determine whether it's upper or lower airway when you're listening to lung sounds. But during this forty hours, it's like, one of the concerns that we had is, it's like, how much oxygen is he giving, giving Dave? Uh, the doctor or the nurse or whoever makes that decision. Uh, one thing, um, that was noted is like, he was only receiving one to two liters per minute. And I'm not sure what your policy is, but, um, oxygen therapy is critical for patients who are having a stroke and are not getting oxygen, uh, to those areas that they need to. Uh, one other concern we have is new doc came in on it, new one on Saturday, did not come to see Dave until his apneic event was seven hours later. So when a doctor comes, comes on, it's like, I'm not sure what other things were going on at the hospital. But if, if there's like a severe issue, uh, an early issue, um, I would assume, um, that they would come and see those patients first, and triage them first. Uh, new doctor indicated they were going, uh, to use a drug and trying to reverse, uh, the previous one they gave. My question is, why wasn't this done sooner? Yet they were thinking that, um, they could do something to reverse this drug that was given that was long-acting. How can they did do it sooner? So they finally decided to innovate Dave and put him, uh, in ICU. Um, we continued to work with our, to work on getting Dave moved. So we used backdoor channels, um, to get Dave a bed at Swedish Cherry Hill, which is a known hospital for dealing with the strokes. Eight months early lifted, one third in the morning. Um, if you knew Dave, I worked with him eight years. And I know for a fact, Dave would not want to be in the condition, condition needed. Um, Swedish Cherry Hill was upset, but my only app, how Dave's condition was when he got there. Um, and, and that's kind of concerning. So Saturday, he passed away, or I mean, excuse me, uh, so he passed away. Uh, that's what he wanted, he was in locked-in, locked-in syndrome. If he, if you can imagine what you're going through right now, I mean, you're looking around, you're, you're, I mean, you have full cognitive ability, but you're paralyzed, you can't do anything. You have to, it's a scary thought. And everybody that knew Dave knew that he did not want to live like that. And if you ask the most firefighters, it's like, we don't wanna, wanna be in a nursing home or anything. We've been through that. So, I mean, some of the questions we had is, where were the plots coming from? What's your hospital's policy on, uh, O two therapy for stroke patients? What medications were given for working symptoms? Was he given appropriate medication? Was he given too much medication? How long was he being monitored? Um, nothing was ever relayed by staff on these questions. So it is difficult for the nurse to appropriately kind of, uh, determine on the respiratory issue. If he or she thinks that, that there's a respiratory issue, it's like, why didn't they call a respiratory therapist sooner or later, before they gave Alphaslam, when they didn't know, okay, if it was an upper or lower airway? Um, why was, why was Dave, like I said, given the drug with such a strong half-life? Talking to paramedics, and I indicated this either, or earlier, talking to paramedics and other professionals, was noted that getting such a drug is not productive in evaluating this neurologic and cognitive functions. So why was there also no better effort made at Dave? To better, when his conditions deteriorated so quickly, I saw that this patient. Um, if I saw this patient in the field, we would have automatically definitely ALS, ALS email, that ALS has worked for the hospital, it does specifically with cardiac ins- strokes of severe nature like this. Now, during, during the time that all of us were going through this, um, we've, um, Kettas Valley Fire Rescue was great, got, packed the chief loan and chief Elliot, and they, they said that they would be happy to facilitate that transport. Uh, we talked to our, uh, chief, Chief Lainey, um, to get permission to utilize our Department Eighth Car, to come over and get him. We talked to, uh, other county chiefs in Eastside Fire Rescue and to try and get help in some way, because we felt we were hamstrung by this doctor's decisions. We reached out to, uh, a group of firefighters to help transport Dave to KVH Hospital, um, or from KVH to another hospital, and I was willing to tran- uh, either drive or ride him back. Within what we did thus, we had a South County, a South County paramedic over on the West Side, um, ready to come over with ALS equipment, and, uh, permission was given by Gert Hiraups as well. Finally, backdoor channel was open, um, helped us open up a bed at Swedish Cherry Hill. Um, what's interesting is, after this, two other stroke patients, um, were admitted after Dave, and they were transferred out fairly quickly. One of those patients was also from, you know, retired firefighter's mom that we worked in, worked with as well. So maybe something changed, maybe, maybe you guys saw something that needed to change. Um, so these, these are just all a bunch of issues that, um, I think needs to be addressed. I've worked with several, like KVH staff, Dr. Woodard, um, the Dr. Gustafson, um, and the nurses were all great. And the doctors are like conductors of patient care. And I feel that this orchestra was trying to do their best, but the conductor was not doing their best. Please take a look at what happened here. Please make changes, um, in how you guys do business. Um, I'd like to see KVH as a premier hospital in central Washington. I want the best doctors over here. I want, even if you guys aren't able to handle the severe patients, that we can count on KVH, get the patients here, get the patients stabilized, early them out of here, all over to the West Side. It's like, everybody can't do everything, but you can do something to make people's lives better. I just wanted to share these comments with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment?
To be brief, I just want to introduce myself. My name is CJ Goldsmith, I'm the new fire chief for Kettas Valley Fire and Rescue. I replaced, uh, John Sinclair, he retired, he's enjoying the good life as of January one. So I've met many of you, but I just wanted to come and, and introduce myself to the board and, and to all the folks that are here, and, and just say hi, and, and looking forward to, to working with you all soon, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any additional public comment? Right, hearing none, we'll move on to presentations. And so we have Lisa and Danielle and Haley, who are here to share some information with us, so take it away.
Yeah, moving brief, um, so you guys had a handout, you're color-coded. Uh, we had the privilege of having some of the board members with us on Wednesday to walk through some of our, um, puddle notes and things like that. And, and it actually kicked off pretty well with them asking a bunch of questions about how we work and what we do, and how everything functions and stuff for our department, so, um, so thank you for, for.
Were you reading Julie that long?
No, 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 but it was very insightful for everybody, so it was great, we loved it. Um, so we look forward to next week when we have Erica.
Just me?
I think.
You, just you.
Okay.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, so if you have questions, bring it, so we can address them and walk.
Sorry, if you have a lot of repeats, they might ask the same thing.
That's okay, that's totally okay. Uh, so the green boxes on the top here, these are our AR days. This is all for twenty-two-four, this is a recap, these, this page here, of kind of what we've worked through in the department. Um, so they're kind of broken down, color-coded a little bit, based on like, kind of the area, uh, the department that the staff are working. So our AR days, which is a total for the, the whole department, went, um, from December twenty-three from seventy-one point nine. And I have some new stats that are not written on here, but December was fifty-seven point one. So that was pretty huge for us to, to get that down.
And didn't we kind of peak higher in the spring or something? Didn't, we were, we were eighty days at one point, right?
We got hit by change, the change, the change healthcare, um, really hit us, so.
Yeah.
We were sending claims out paper, and, yeah, it was quite the year, we had to, yeah, bad over that.
December of twenty-four was fifty-seven point one?
Correct, correct.
Off the top of my head, I think that we have not been below sixty, I think since we switched to Cerner, and then check, triple check back, we, we got close, I think, to sixty, but.
Brushed against it, yeah.
Yeah, so, just a little shout out to the team.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then our total cash collected for the year was, um, thirty million years. Our highest month for December was fourteen million, which was pretty good. We haven't seen that kind of money come in the door, uh, since I've been here. So I don't know what the historical piece of that is, but, um, I know from, from my perspective, that's the highest month we've had, which is great. Um, and then right here on the, in the gray box is the visits for each clinic, uh, the total visits for each clinic that were segregated out. Um, financial assistance, we gave six hundred and fifty-four patients, um, financial assistance. Uh, incoming calls, which is, uh, usually about down here. So there's about two to two-hundred-and-fifty calls per week coming in, fielding answers and questions from patient bills that go out, or appointments that maybe need to be transferred out, or things like that. So quite a few, quite a big hu- high volume there. Collections, um, these are encounters that got sent to a collection agency. So we sent five million out, um, and we've received, uh, uh, back-end payments there. Um, our inpatient observation stays, we've done, uh, nineteen-hundred notifications, that's for the hospital here, with, um, the payers. Um, and then moving on to coding, we've had, um, there, here's the clinics, hospital, and the total of two-hundred-and-fifteen that were analyzed and coded for the year. Um, and our highest, um, coded month, which we accomplished, was in October. We had twenty-one thousand fins that were coded, that was pretty good for the coding team, especially on a.
What does this stand for?
Financial benefit.
Yeah, like an account.
When you come to a visit, yeah.
I remember that one, so.
That's okay, that's okay. Um, and, and this is pretty good, considering we're down a couple coders in our coding department. Um, that's pretty good, for those numbers to shine like that. Um, our D N F C, our lowest days were, uh, one-five for the hospital and one-point-four for the clinic, which is pretty good, those were our lowest days.
No, it's discharge, not final code.
Sorry, we have all these acronyms, I'm sorry, and have a.
Mean in layman's terms? So the, the patient has discharged, so he walked out of the clinic, going for, walk out of the clinic, discharged, clock starts, and then from then, they have a period before it's coded, so discharge, not final coded.
The coding needs to happen before we.
So, so for the clinic, October was the fastest turnaround on that, is that what this is saying, at one-point-four?
Yep, yep. Um, and of course, I mean, to me here, there's staff listed in here, because we went through this with our staff, so those are the, the staff members that are associated with these kind of groups that are doing this kind of work here.
And that clinic number, I think we're up to about nine days in the middle of twenty-two-four.
Yeah, yeah, we were pretty high, we were high.
Yeah.
Um, and then on the bottom here, we'll get to the claim sent. So we had two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars in claims, I'm sorry, two-hundred-and-twenty-six, meaning claim sent. The count was two-hundred-and-forty-seven out the door. Um, we got denials, we had twenty-two thousand in denials, that's a count.
But now, when you say claim sent, is that to the patient or to the insurance company?
Insurance, insurance, yes.
And it's, sometimes it's multiple, so you could send it more than once? So the same claim could go three or four times, if need be, possibly?
Yeah.
Okay, sometimes not unique, they're total.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so you're getting about just shy of two thousand denials a month.
Yep.
And that's one.
Just the first time they deny, uh, they often deny several times, so it's gonna be reworked.
We didn't put the rework on here.
Yeah, we had hard to capture all that.
You seen for a month, twenty-two thousand?
No, it was in for the year, it was for the year.
About two thousand.
Nineteen oh.
Yeah, she did buy it, because she did. Um, yeah, of course. Uh, so then we also audit our encounters before they go to bill. So here's our audited claims, or audited fins that we did. So we had day surgeries, observation, inpatient, that's the count for our encounters that we audited before they went out the door. Right now, we have, um, some encounters on hold for the auditing to happen, and that's important, so we can capture all the charges to make sure that when it got through the system, we've got everything we're capturing.
Is that in-house audit or external?
Nope, we do that in-house in our department.
Two-person team.
It's a two-person team right now, you were talking with Christine, who has the glasses, right, to invite you. Um, she's one of the auditors, so.
She seems like she'd make a good auditor.
Oh, yeah, very detailed, oh my goodness, yeah. She's capturing stuff that we're like, she's like, what's there not there, so why isn't enough that? We're like, put them on there, let's get them on, let's get them out the door, so. Um, so then, the bottom one here are some of the projects that we completed in order to get some of these numbers down and the cash in the door. Um, missing payments we resolved, so we had a hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars in missing payments that we recovered, um, and posted to the encounters to drop some of this AR and bring that cash in.
What's a m- m- missing payment versus just a payment not made?
So, yeah, good question. So what happens sometimes in, uh, in our world is that the, the claim goes out the door, and then it, it comes back and, and it's got a, maybe a zero on it or something, and then we, we get a call to them and say, hey, it looks like you guys didn't pay the claim, what's going on? Oh, yeah, we issued a check, blah, blah, blah. So then they, we don't know where that check went. So we get the check number and the dollar amount, and sometimes it's in a bulk check that came with twelve others.
Something somewhere, that literally was missing. Because they put some sort of identifier on it that maybe just doesn't match up.
It maybe didn't match up, or maybe it didn't get to us, or maybe it did, and we just never got it, because, uh, we have a, you know, mail that can sometimes get float around in the hospital.
Electronic at this point, they don't just like.
So if I'm getting, yeah, I'm trying to get more.
I'm sorry, these missing payments, this is not from insure, the insurance? Yes, from the insurance, or this is from the patient?
Insurance, insurance.
I saw that they, yeah.
Okay, we also had, you know, just a side note, we also had, um, there's some issues with mail being delivered from them. Um, it wasn't them, it's, it's the building itself. So when the mail didn't have a suite number on it, it was getting rejected and sent back to the pair. So what we did was went to the, to the mail, the, the post office, and said, hey, post office, delivery people, could you please stick it in a box and, and allocate a box for no suite number, so we don't get them returned, because this was a big problem, that's why we were getting these. And I don't know, and I think it has something to do with the insurance and the, and the tax ID and, and the MPI and all that stuff that's registered. And the building is one building allocated in different buckets, differently. And so that, it was, if it didn't have a suite number, it was getting rejected back out. So we fixed that, which is good, so now we don't have that problem, because we have a box now that's across the street by, uh, writing, and it's now called no suite numbers. So I'm like, whatever, it works.
It's gonna get flung.
It works, yeah, so, so those were some of that problem that we had. So we, we found the root cause of it to fix it, so that was good. Yeah, so, and then we had some jail billing, um, cleanup that we had to do. So the jail billing that we collected was a hundred-and-sixty-one thousand, that was good. Um, and then combining some of our accounts, we have some same-day combines that we had to do. So some of those projects kind of are labor-intensive and require some special attention on sideways. So we were able to get through these things to get some of these numbers down and up.
You say same-day combines, I remember from the demo, was this the, that idea that they can only have one, um, one payment per day, and so if they have five or six things done, you have, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes. Um, and then on the, the next page here, I don't know if you guys want to go through this line on your own, or if you want to walk through this, but these are just kind of celebrations. Uh, things that.
Give us the highlights, take us through the important stuff here.
Yeah, um, well, let's see. I think our wins, let's go to the wins. We merged two departments, so we merged, um, H I M and R C M. So now it's called R C O. Um, revenue cycle operations is kind of what we have been given the title. Um. We've added some more E F Ts and eight thirty fives, which. Okay, to your point, will stop hopefully some of that mailing from coming, you know, getting lost. So that electronic file is what is super important for us to get is to get them all sent electronically. So we've increased that and we still have some more work to do with some of that.
If you s- send something to the insurance company electronically, do you receive things electronically in return or is it kind of hit and miss?
If we're set up for E F T and eight thirty five, so the E F T would be electronic fund transfer into our bank at Gashner. And then the eight thirty five gives us the electronic file back with an E O B and it auto posts to the encounter. So we don't have to manually go in and do all that stuff.
Sounds really nice for automation.
Yes, it is great. We've increased it a lot. So it's good. We get more money in the bank faster and we don't have to worry about missing check.
Yeah.
Projects, um, so.
Those were the things when change healthcare got attacked, uh, we weren't able to receive the eight thirty five files. So we were manually posting everything at that point.
So getting.
Yes, yes. Well, yeah, and I have one poster and she was doing all of it.
Oh, my goodness.
One, yeah, she's a rock star. Um, uh, let's see, we got a payment plan policy, uh, implemented with a credit card on file, which we never had before. So. A patient could put a credit card on file and, and forget it, you know? It'll just ding it until it runs down to zero based on that payment arrangement we set up for them. So that's been a huge. Success with patients not having to worry about calling every time they get a blue statement and a red statement, a blue statement, a red statement. And getting them all confused. So every time they call up and they say, I got another statement, we can add it into that payment arrangement and that just auto just keeps adding to it if we need to. So.
Will they still get a notification if their card is?
Yep, yep. Yes, it'll, it'll send a statement and it'll show the payment's been, um, retracted out.
Think I would be contacting this about that.
Perfect, I love it, I love it.
We've had a lot of positive patient contact, uh, although. And it's, they just leave it on.
Like send it, forget it. Yeah, no, I love that. And then we also did, um, I don't know if that's on here or not, but we did this care credit. So we have care credits available too for patients. So. Um, it's, it's not all the kiosks and front desks and stuff if patients want to use that option, they can apply for that care credit. Or if they already had a care credit from another, you know, dentist or whatever, they can still use that here. So. Just giving them more options to pay. Uh, let's see, website update. We updated our website with Michelle World, um, the insurance plans that we take. And the, the, it has, um, under our patient accounting, all the beds we take and little sub plans that kind of are under them. Because sometimes it can be confusing. Yeah, and it's, uh, it's divided out by commercial plans, managed care plan and things like that. So it's a little more simple for the, the patients to kind of see. Oh, let me go on their website and see what they take. Um, contracts, we, uh, determined extended and we terminated Renton. Renton is a collection agency that we used as a secondary, so we're just going to utilize the two we have now. Um, and we got rid of extend. They were kind of helping with some managed care follow-up, but they were not that good. Um, we did some super, super big overhaul in this credentialing, which was huge for us to get some of these numbers in here. Um, so that was a good, uh, win for us.
Good call up, that's tough. Support with.
Yes.
And at least roads were instrumental in.
Yes.
Revenue cycle and they've built a really strong relationship now. So now. This team knows when a provider is credentialed, when it's backdated too, and they're able to use that information for appeals.
Yep, and who they're, you know, they're waiting on. Atna versus, you know, Molina and stuff like that, just so we know where we are with that. It'll help us on the backside.
Yeah, credentialing is with every insurance plan, it's. Date, so the date that it's effective and then its location too. So we have some providers that. Will float between locations, they have pre-credentialed at both and I'll just chase all of those.
Let's see, health share policy, we got some policies going, uh. We've got some P S R meetings. We've been, been really successful with, with meeting with the P S Rs in different clinics and areas to try to. Collaborate with each other, figure out how we can help them, what they need from us. You know, that kind of stuff. So it's been really good with working with the P S Rs and getting all that involvement together. So that collaboration is huge for the. The departments to be able to work together and get that stuff out. Um, we streamlined the process with synergistics for E D coding. This was a big deal for. Um, Haley to take on synergistics as the backside, uh, report for anything coding. So that's been really good with that workflow. We've gotten that streamlined. It's good. Um, redesigned the report for the M A documentation. This is part of our R O I team who's done this. So this is a, a win for them to be able to streamline some of that process on that side. Where they're waiting for documentation to be done. So that's been a good thing. We did R O I overhaul for the forms. So we're still working on some stuff for the forms. Because we've got some forms that we're trying to update and make sure that we're in Lucidoc with them and stuff like that. And they're, they're, they're the right. Forms for the right reasons. Let's see, standard work and policies uploaded in Lucidoc. That's a big deal for me is to make sure that we have standard work. Policies, procedures, all loaded inside of Lucy Doc, just one housing unit for everything, like manuals. On how anyone's job in our departments, anyone's job in anyone's area. So that's huge for, for us to get that, um. Organized and, and up to date. So that's it, that's all I have. Uh, on the backside here. On the backside, um, is, is kind of our twenty twenty five copy goals that we have. We have quite a few, but just, uh. Just a down and dirty on different, um, aspects of that. We're trying to still reduce D N F C, D N F B, which are the claims that are not coded or billed. Uh, and then still keep our A R days down. Um, tighten up the missing documentation and timeliness. That's a huge deal for us. Um, and reduce timely filing, which is the next bucket. Um, credentialing, medical necessity, prior authorization. These are some of the things that we get. Uh, denials for. So we want to try to make sure we get to the root cause of whatever is causing any of these listings here. And that, that is with collaborating with other departments and, and helping each other. We, we, can we get it better? How can we do better? Uh, charge review and charge capture optimization, uh, identifying what charges are not being captured. That's a big deal. We want to make sure we're capturing all the charges that we, we are using in this, in a hospital, provide education to providers and nursing staff regarding. Um, improve patient experience. We want to develop a patient education tools that are for our front end staff to make sure that they can, um. Basically communicate really well. What kind of bill they're getting and why, why they're getting the bill. They're not going to be able to speak to the clinical piece, which is going to have to go back to the clinical staff to answer those if it's clinical. But at least have more tools to help the front end staff with that. Um, increased communication, um, and streamline the process for addressing patient complaints. Um, because right now we just kind of like get an email or a phone call. And so we kind of wanted to create. Um, a bird's system. We could actually put some of the higher level complaints inside of there so that we can have a tracking mechanism as far as the outcome.
Just want to be really specific, billing complaints.
Billing.
Billing. Billing claims are completely different process.
Totally separate.
Billing, uh, billing complaints.
Yes, yes. Um, and then system updates, we have Cerner optimization products, projects going on right now. Uh, we're going to get S S I eventually, um, as Revelate eventually. And Revelate will basically error on top of Cerner and pull out that information. We'll have like a different platform to work off of for our software. Um, and then the S S I is our billing software that we'll, we'll use to go out the door. So. Lot of things coming up with system updates that will be some later on in the year, probably way later, like. Quarter four, maybe even twenty six, I don't know, we'll see. Um, but our biggest challenges and our biggest, um, focus is really up on. The top is to try to just get tight enough on stuff and, and figure out where, where we can move. So we can make sure we keep these going, these numbers.
So part of our copy is collaborating with our departments, sharing the information that revenue cycle does. Um, that is what we're doing here. So sharing all the pieces and elements that go into the collection process on the backend. There's so much on the front end to be able to get it right on the backend. And insurance companies are being very creative. On finding every little undotted I or cross T for a reason to deny the entire claim. Or, or if we got the I and crossed the T, they still.
Forget to include the check in the mailing.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Multiple avenues of complexity there.
Yeah.
This team's been amazing to pull this together. Um, Lisa Gott was promoted to the director in September. So we went through a, a big group. Organization and shout out to the staff for hanging tight as we were organized. It was a little, well, nerve wracking for all the staff for a period there. Haley even switched departments for a minute.
I did.
And.
It was good.
Yeah, promoted Lisa Gott and she accepted that role in September and then she quickly identified Haley as Reyes. For our coding manager and then Daniel Homer for the recycle manager in October, November, I think it was. So they've. Made a lot of quick progress here and on top of their staffing challenges that the whole hospital is faced as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. You guys have any questions or?
Well, this is a great summary and I appreciate your presentation and guess, uh, I mean, just wanted to say thanks for inviting us for the, you know, to stop by a meeting the other day. I mean, that was. I mean, Jason has always given a lot of credit to the people who all have work, but it's just the sheer amount of work it takes to get, uh, to get. Keep the hospital running, you know, from a financial standpoint, it's just, uh, I don't know, it was even more than I thought it was. Um, and, and I thought it was quite a bit. So anyway, I just really appreciate, uh, all the work you guys do and. And, uh, thanks a lot for, um, expanding our understanding of, of, uh. What that is, what goes into that.
Yeah, no problem. Anytime you guys want to come to any of our meetings, it's open door. We have open door policy at our, our department. Come look in, see what we're doing, pop in.
I do think we derailed you guys a bit, but.
That's okay.
It was very educational for, for us, I know.
Good, good. No, I, and I appreciate you guys' support in, in what we're doing. So thank you, thank you for that.
We've had good staff feedback too. They really appreciated it, being able to have conversation, feel heard, uh. And, and just talk about the good work that they're doing.
Very much.
Bob, do you have any, uh, comments or thoughts, uh, for revenue cycle?
No, it was just, again, uh, really fascinating and, um, going to the Gema up to their location and. Just the sheer number of steps it takes to get from walking through the door of the clinic to. Actually accounting for the money that insurance companies or individuals pay. A lot of steps, crossing lots of hands and it's very complex and just really appreciate the. You know, that, that group was very positive and, you know, you could just tell that they work well together and that says. A lot about the leadership there, but it was really fascinating.
Thank you. Yeah, it, it seems as though, um, stubbornness has to be one of the qualities of people working in a division. You can't give up against these insurance companies. They just try to wear you down.
We don't like the word no.
Your pillow you can scream into at the.
Yeah.
Seems like it would be very frustrating work.
I was just going to make a comment that as a consumer and as a mother of several children who rely services a bit. Um, things can get confusing for me, like which, you know, I see an E O B, I want to match it to a bill and I have to stand on top of that. And when I call, everybody's very kind, very patient. I never feel rushed. People are, um, I just. I think that it would be trying if I was on that end to walk people through that, but I mean, if it is for them, they don't show it. So. Thanks to your whole team for helping sell patient and kind to your callers.
Yeah, yeah, I do have, um, the staff that Anthony phone here. Sometimes they're like, I'm stressed out, I need a break, I needed it. Like, you're fine, let's bring you up here and I'll swap you out with somebody else. And that way they get a minute to kind of decompress and. We've had a couple of those where we've had to kind of switch roles. I'll send Edgar down there and then Martha comes up so that she can have a break for a week and then. And then she's like, all right, I'm ready to go at it again. So we kind of listen to them too.
I think I talked towards the last, so I know I spoke to you before and I can't remember who else. Everybody's been very kind.
Oh, good, good. It's good to hear that.
Might need some puppies down there or something.
We have talked about that.
Talked about this.
None of this will let me get work done.
Thank you for coming. Um, if you want to escape, you can do it now or you're welcome to sit through the hole.
We'll leave you guys to your.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I get away, we will move to reports and dashboard. And first off, we'll talk with Chief Poli Officer Mandals.
My report is, uh, starts on page eleven. Um. First, if there's any questions about anything that's in my report, that's cool. About that first.
Any question, Bernadine? Bob, any, any questions from Andy for this report?
No.
Uh, I know when I got to the summary of improvement, I, I put a question mark around diabetic foot checks are defined in the clinic, clinic settings. So I really, that's not a good thing. We want to keep that.
That's right. Checking feed diabetic patients, not, uh, more diabetic.
Good. So is there anything you'd like to highlight in the report this week?
Um, not, uh, on that, uh. They're working on that. Uh, we think some of that has to do with, uh, new providers coming on and they, the clinics are trying a few things, specifically with the diabetic. Um, foot chats.
Who gives Just Culture sort of the key?
It's a company called The Just Culture Company. It's actually who, Ron does not, we engaged them years ago. Uh, to do our Just Culture work, I think it was ten years ago. It was twenty fourteen. Um, David Marks is the C E O and, uh, when I was attending the I H I Patient Safety Executive Officer Training. David Marks and James Reason were like at the forefront of Just Culture in healthcare. And so, um, they offer certification now for that. So I didn't, I didn't know that. Janine brought that to my awareness. I had my first class today, we did, and, um, it was really great. It was wonderful. We were on the call with, um. Medical staff, H R folks, patient safety people from Johns Hopkins, all kinds of different organizations around the country and. It's really, it was great.
And this is, uh, this is a particular interest of mine, but does everybody, and you don't have to say anything. Is there anybody, does everybody know what Just Culture is on the board? Not trying to play.
Oh, it's, uh, uh. Take the knife and just say what? Don't you tell, make sure we do.
Go ahead, Dan. Uh, you know, I think it's really.
It's a system of workplace justice. So, and one of the things they look at is, uh, as you're looking through behaviors and choices. When are, uh, people engaged in, you know, reckless or intentionally harmful behavior compared to. Making human errors and you respond differently to those things, right? Humans are fallible and they're going to err. So how you respond to those errors or mitigate the risk of them error is different from a person who chooses. To, to harm a patient or harm another staff person or harm the organization. Um, so that's really where it, it kind of starts.
Yeah.
This particular company has a whole set of algorithms that you can use to kind of help. Decision making as a manager or a leader in assessing and evaluating, um, errors or, or choices people with, with their fund of.
This is, it's right up Manny's alley, uh, because, uh, it's, the idea is instead of blame and shame, right? For, for good faith mistakes, you want them to report thems, uh, the report errors and report mistakes so that, uh, there can be improvements. Um, and those mistakes can be avoided and you can put, uh, uh, things in place so that those mistakes don't have to end, right? So, um, yeah, like you said, you're trying to distinguish like. You know, actual malfeasance and things, but you don't want people to be ashamed. You don't want people to, to hide it, to, to try to, to. Paper it over. You want them to come out and explain the mistake they made. And you want to encourage that so that you can. It is.
Yeah.
That's it.
And it, there's also, it's shared accountability too. So there's the individual accountability and then the organization or the sys. Organizations accountability to, you know, what we tolerate, what we punish, the systems we design. And so it takes kind of. Um. Uh, elements and some factors, uh, engineering, um, jurisprudence, there's, that's what they're kind of all bringing together to say. How do you develop a culture, which takes a while, but, um, where it's just.
Right, and you don't want to, right, you don't want it to be sort of individual, uh, blaming. You want to say like, what is it about the system or the setup? That allows. that allowed that mistake to happen? And so it's, it's sort of a shared responsibility toward improvement. Um, and it's, I mean, I just think it's really interesting stuff.
It's my, some of my favorite stuff. Uh, it's, I'm very passionate about it and I, I can't thank Janine enough though, because her coming in and saying, hey, this exists and we've, you know, been a little bit of a COVID fog for a while. And, um, it's just really exciting to get back to, this is the work that I am really passionate about. And you have to partner though with, with HR and, um, executive leadership has to be on board or it doesn't work. So, um, I'm really excited.
Thank you.
Part of also and, uh, uh, Janine's, um, employer of choice, Quapi, right? Like people are not happy in a place that they work that feels unfair.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so anything else before we go on to the next, uh, thing, Sharon?
Um, not necessarily in my report, but I did want to give you just a, a little heads up or update. Um, this week, uh, Kennesaw County Public Health, uh, Department put out a notice to providers about subtyping for influenza A. And that's somewhat in relation to the novel, uh, avian influenza, but, um, there had also been a, a notice, a recommendations that had come up out from CDC weeks prior and just want to let you know that Anna and the lab, Katie and Lab are, uh, working on how do we order this? How do we make sure this happens? And with the health department to make sure that we can get these sent. So it's a pretty specific.
For all positive?
No, um,
Once that has
Admissions.
Okay, admissions.
And so they, before the notice came out this week, they've already working on that.
So I believe, uh, today we're talking about suicide risk assessment and intervention bundling, metrics.
Yeah, so, um, part of the reason, this, it's on the dashboard right now, um, and it's on, let's see the
Fifteen?
Fifteen.
Yeah, page fifteen there. And you can see for the last year, I mean, we've done really well. Um, and the most, uh, recent failure was about not assessing the risk. So what's included in this, it's a bundle. So it's a, it's a few things and if you miss any one thing, it's a go, um, for a patient. So it measures, uh, what's included in the bundle is, did you do the Columbia Suicide Severity Rating? And that's the standardized assessment of suicide risk. And then did we chart that rating? So there's a whole assessment you can do, but did you chart it? If they, if it was applicable, if they were moderate, high risk, did you, uh, initiate the order for suicide precautions? And then if the precautions were placed, did you do them? So did, was the environment made safe and the frequency of documentation achieved? Like if you have a one-to-one sitter, uh, with the person, you have to document a certain frequency. So every single documentation, similar to, uh, the restraints bundle. And, um, if there was a sitter, did they document what they need to be observing? So those are, that's what's all included in that. This measure came to, uh, we started looking at it back in twenty twenty-two, prior to a survey. But then when the survey came, they also, it was a, it was a finding. It was a concern. And at the time when we started this bundle that act, we were forty percent, meaning this, all of these things. That was back in twenty twenty-two. So, uh, after we were surveyed in June, um, we gave education, uh, we revised our policies. There was a lot of work we did too, creating tools. So it was easy to document or uh, even more people to be able to document. For instance, if we have security or, uh, different staff in the sitter role, making sure the, the training was just in time and that they could, we could document that they'd had the training and that they then could document what they were giving. Um, and by August, we've gotten up to eighty-three percent. So it took a little while though, um, still to get that really stabilized. A lot of that work has come from Bonnie Gibson, who's our quality improvement are in. She works at Memorial on the psych unit. Uh, that's part of the work she does. So she's a real resource, uh, in this work for us. But she does, uh, education, gives feedback on every single failure. Uh, it's not my favorite word, but it's not a great way to, there's no other really great word to describe it. So that we could improve to get where we are at. So we were still hovering eighty-four to ninety-four percent. Um, in twenty twenty-three, we really have improved in twenty twenty-four. And some of that was not just providing educate, re-education, education, but they were intervening just in time too, as the patient was here. So getting out and talking to the staff in that moment, like, hey, we noticed this. Um, and what most of the failures are now is kind of a I wouldn't say disagreement, but it's the, they may have a history, right? So the, it's the percentage of patients with mental health issues. So some nurses will say, oh, well, they're here for abdominal pain. It's not a mental health issue. I didn't do this risk assessment. Where Bonnie says, I'm looking at the chart and they have anxiety and there's all these other things. And we really should be considering that in, in the whole scope of what we're looking at with that patient. So you should have, should have done that assessment anyway. So some of it is a, a difference of opinion about when the bundles should be applied or not. And I, I mean, I think that's the right place to be with this, where we're saying, hmm, could we do more? Could we do different? Yes, but it's not an immediate safe issue with patients. And so our plan with this measure, uh, because we are doing so well, is to take it off of the dashboard next year. That was approved by you all, um, last month. It will be continued to be monitored the same way we do it now. So Bonnie will still be, um, doing the reviews, uh, reviewing with, uh, staff, um, when issues occur and providing feedback. It will go to our, our data share meeting, the emergency department quarterly meeting, ED staff meetings, um, and what Bonnie, it's, she has her own dashboard that she shares with, uh, nursing. So I don't know if you have questions about it, but
Bob, any questions on this category?
No.
Okay, thank you. Um, do you know what's the next report you're going to give in detail? But, uh, let's connect, can we pick one out?
I think there were some suggestions. We skipped one. I was, yeah. I have a matter sticking up. Some of that, let's see. Did we talk about, we talked about readmissions, right? I think clinic falls.
Uh, because we were going to do that for full month, but then we did.
We did something else.
Those falls.
Sepsis. This was what we did because it's sepsis awareness month. So, yeah, and that would probably be good for us to talk about that anyway, because that was our um, some of the goals of the previous, um, medical director for the clinics and CMO.
Very good.
Does that, does that work?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for us?
All right. Real comment, uh, I, I went into a public health this weekend and all the staff there, they just spoke so highly of Manny's team as well as other, the fourth trimester team, but and solid KBH. So I've got a lot of compliments for also work that our team does.
Did you, we have a great partnership with them. We, we meet with them weekly still, uh, so they come over and visit us in the Macanix and all kinds of stuff. So yeah, we have a great partnership with them. We're really lucky to have that in our community.
Excellent. All right, next up, we got the CEO, Jason Adman.
So excited to announce again because officially now Dr. Thomas is our achievement log sir. Name tag all made now, um, he's integrating so nicely with the team. The only thing is I, I forget because I've worked with him so long that he hasn't met everybody. So, but I keep bumping into people I haven't introduced him. But just looking to the team, very excited to have Dr. Thomas on our leadership team and continue his path, KBH. Um, still interviewing for the CFO position. Well, not interviewing at the moment, but, uh, we had a couple of interviews and we're still looking at this time. So, um, it's still just across the state. I had another hospital call me today and check in how, how we're doing because they're struggling as well. So it's, it's across the state and probably regional or the nation, a shortage in that area. So we continue looking. Um, home care hospice, they still, they had a lot of turnover last couple of months, but they seem to not totally stabilized, but we have a couple of travelers in there that are really helping out. And then in around Debbie Kelly that's there as well. So just appreciate the support to help that service line as they really kind of rebuild from these turnovers that we've had recently. Um, we've had some good interviews for good clinical directors that feel positive. So we are hopeful to land again.
Exciting.
Um, lab, so in March of twenty twenty-three, the board approved the purchase of Beckman Coulter Analyzer and that has went live, right, January fourteenth? Had confirmed, um, so thank you for that new piece of equipment that they're, they're able to utilize.
They still have one piece to put in it, which will be, I think, the second week of February. But it's the track system so that it, it will be in a one continuous all the way down the wall. They'll have a showing town.
Yeah, looks forward to it.
Yes, massive piece of equipment. It's taken a long time to get it all into place. We had to do some renovations in, in there. All the while, I haven't disrupted any services. So, um, shout out to Katie Bellis, has been her pet project for more than a year and it's come together well. Otherwise, any other questions on the written report that I have?
I, I was going to ask about the saline, if it's still an ongoing issue. They were hoping to have it cleared towards the end of, so.
Yeah, so we still are on allocation, but our supplies are holding steady. Been to all of the nursing staff and all clinical staff for their conservation efforts is a huge reason why it is steady. We are, we're not getting as much as we would like, but because of our conservation, we are holding steady. Yep.
Any questions for just part of the report?
No. Um, little construction update. So they are, well, I don't know, Wayne might have it in his packet, but, um, as Walker starts finishing up in the expansion area, they're going to invent and do some renovation in the ER. That's kind of the last part of this renovation. They're going to convert what's the, the physician's sleep rest area. Um, I think kind of multi-purpose room into a supply closet. And with, because they'll be losing that area, we're going to be looking at just some concepts of a mezzanine of how we could utilization in that space to have some more purpose areas. So
Sorry, which space was this?
On the mezzanine up here.
The, the space that you're looking at that will be changing?
So in the ER, the
Thank you.
ER is the first.
Okay, that's what I thought. Positive.
Yep.
Okay.
So losing some
I didn't think that
Some multi-purpose rest area in ER.
Got it.
And then we're looking if we can create that space back up in the mezzanine.
We're taking down a, a joint wall and removing one door. And it's going to double, about double their space as far as storage space and for their equipment and everything. They get a little more accessible where they don't have to keep something down in the basement. You know, down to get some.
And then another just news from yesterday is Teamsters did meet and for the service workers contract and they did vote in agreement with the, um, content we had negotiated and proposed. So excited to get that buttoned up and thank you, Janine, for your help in that and, and everybody else who attended those negotiations and worked through that collaboratively with Teamsters.
And approximately how many employees does that represent?
It's a handful, a lot. Yeah. I, I would probably guess eighty. EBS, yep. So it's environmental services, um, laundry services, food nutrition services, patient care techs, materials management.
My team as far as EBS and laundry, about forty people alone.
Okay.
That's all that I have.
All right, thank you. So next up will be, uh, Janine, uh, chief, uh, HR, Janine?
You're muted if you're talking, Janine.
Janine, are you able to hear us? So what we'll do is let's, uh, let's jump forward to, to Wayne and if Janine makes contact, this will come later. Circle back to her in a few moments. So
Uh, my report didn't make it into the packet this time. So, so it's sitting there, I mean, separately. There's one of them. As we did about two weeks ago. A lot of this is, uh, kind of the, similar to what we had on there. And, uh, so we're making a lot of progress. We, uh, have some new, new all storms that they may taken over, uh, our traditional, our outpatient surgery calling areas. And, uh, we have one little section flooring that we need to finish, uh, to, you know, absolutely not one hundred percent completed. Expecting it to be February to come, first part of February, and so we'll be completely done with that. Um, we had, uh, something that has changed, uh, from here is we had Endo that was playing on the same type of flooring. And we actually got enough of it in this last week that it'll be turned over to us on, uh, Monday instead of having to wait until February seventeenth. So maybe it's very happy to have that back in the doctor or two. So we start using two rooms for, for ending now. So the rest of it is, as you say, just pretty much tentative and really pretty well, uh, following on time and just get it.
Anything else for, from you? Any questions for Wayne? Bob, any questions for Wayne?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thanks, Wayne. Appreciate it. I think I'll, you, uh,
Yes.
I think, uh, Janine, can you hear us now?
I can. I, I could hear you guys. I couldn't get my mic to work. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you hear you loud and clear? So, uh, go ahead and take it away. What do you got for us this week?
All right. Thank you. Well, I have our workforce stats, uh, for you, ending the, the year with a thirteen point six, uh, percent turnover. Really thrilled with that, uh, twenty percent turnover goal. Uh, is what a lot of organizations are at, are benchmarking now. Honestly, pre-COVID, anything under fifteen was fantastic. So I'm just pleased as punch with, with that. Our, um, our hiring experience rating continues to be, uh, above the benchmark. So, um, just very, very proud of the work that our recruiting and onboarding team, uh, just bend over backwards to, to make that happen and make it happen quickly. Um, also want to thank, uh, Jason for allowing us to make some changes to our process to reduce wait times for um, hiring and onboarding and extending offers. Um, so we've been able to reduce, uh, our, our time to, uh, time to hire and, and getting people into onboard, um, quickly. And we have been, uh, able to be a little bit more flexible with it, um, to meet our candidates' needs where, where they're at. Um, so very, very happy with that. Um, as far as recruitment, our strategy for, uh, twenty twenty-five overarching across, uh, physician recruitment, nursing recruitment, allied health recruitment is really expanding our outreach efforts to residency programs, specifically those targeted toward rural communities. Um, so, uh, that is part of our strategic push. And then, uh, big thank you to Michelle and her marketing team. They're helping us develop, um, uh, uh, an updated, um, marketing campaign for recruitment efforts. Um, and, uh, they've just done a marvelous, marvelous job, uh, with that. So very excited to see, uh, what fruit that will bear in the future. Um, we did, uh, recognize we needed a little help. Um, we had some areas of concern in respiratory therapy and home health. We just were not getting any traction there. So we did do some outreach to, um, some recruitment firms and it looks like we do have some traction. Uh, these two firms are, uh, contingent. So we don't pay unless they produce and, um, uh, we seem to be getting some traction there. So that's exciting. Our leaves and ADA, uh, accommodation requests are holding steady, um, in terms of volume. We have, we're knee deep in the implementation of a new software for that and we are on track for the March one launch date. So very excited about that. I know Ani is counting the days and minutes, uh, for that to, to So very excited about that. I know Ani is counting the days and minutes, uh, for that to, to take hold and then. Um, our other information system, um. Body of work with HealthStream has kicked off and that's on track as well. That will be our competencies, our learning management system and our performance management system. Um, and that's a big deal because that is the, the single. Point of, single source of truth that we will be using for our, uh, competencies and to be able to show DMV. Um, uh, the. Performance records and that we are, um, doing our due diligence to ensure people are competent, um. In their field, so, uh, very excited for that and that is on track as well. And, uh, as far as provider updates, we have our, uh, second vascular surgeon in Dr. David Coleman. He started on December thirty. Um, we have, uh, he, he is, uh, training with Dr. Zammatt and staff and then a third vascular surgeon. Um, uh, Dr. Espo started in February. We also have, um, Dr. Nyak. Who, um, was originally slated to start at the beginning of February and is actually gonna start a little bit earlier than that, so lots of movement. Um, in the provider world, um, so Kat's done a, a really marvelous job in, in helping us. Um, ensure that we have good provider, um, recruitment. Are there any?
So just had a ER APC sign, uh, agreeing as well, so that position's been open for eight or nine months at least. So, yeah, we're excited to fill that seat as well.
Yeah.
Any questions for Janine?
Oh, uh, Janine, so with the new cardiologist. Um, coming on board, is he just gonna? See Dr. Hoppy's patients and then once she's back then. He'll give those patients back and, and he'll just continue to build the practice?
Cor- correct.
Um, and then what is, does he do certain skills that? Um, like he's, has a higher affinity for, like, certain? Procedures that, um, he's, that he really excels at or, or something that he really enjoys and. Patients love the outcome.
I'll defer to Dr. Thomas on, on the specifics of, of what he'll be performing, um. Dr. Thomas is, is Dr. Thomas able to speak to that?
Yeah, so, uh, Dr. Nyak is a general cardiologist, whereas Dr. Hoppy is an electrophysiologist by training, so. Dr. Hoppy's skill set, uh, is well lent toward managing cardiac devices. And this will allow us to free up some more time for her to do that and deliver that care at a higher level. Dr. Nyak also has some, um, particular, uh, experience and, and skills. Uh, in high-tech solutions like telehealth and, uh, remote device. Uh, management, so there may be an opportunity for us to build out new, uh, capabilities for our cardiology department with his assistance.
Excellent, thank you. Bob, any other questions?
No.
Um, Janine, do you have the packet in front of you?
I do.
Your, your, your report, I'm just curious, the workforce movement box on, uh, it's my page twenty, it's your page one. Um, our ends sent less than thirteen percent. Just curious, do you mean, is that our goal? What is that, what is that telling me? Our ends percent less than thirteen percent?
Um, so when we're looking at total workforce, we're looking at twenty percent. For our ends, we, we want it to be less than thirteen percent. That, that is the goal, um, and the reason.
So that, that's also a goal then, okay.
Yeah, yeah, less than thirteen percent is the goal and we are, um, currently at thirteen point six, so a little bit above average on that, but. Um, still overall, the thirteen point eight is fantastic. I'll take it. Um, and the fact that we are that close in nursing, that, that doesn't bother me at all. I'm, I'm pretty happy where we landed.
And I can guess why there's a difference, but can you tell me why general is twenty and nurses are thirteen?
Well, they are the largest part of your workforce, um, and so, uh, and, and typically you do have areas. Um, that do have a, a higher turnover rate, so some of those, uh, entry level, um, areas that are kind of high in turnover. Which may be your EVS, your food service, um, which typically will, um, kind of a, affect those numbers. But for nursing, uh, you know, you invest a lot of time and education and energy. Uh, you know, it, it takes a long time. There's a learning curve, um, and that learning curve is only getting. Um, longer and costlier, um, we are learning that we, we have to have more support for these newer nurses. That's not a bad thing. I think it improves our quality, but, um, it is a heavy investment and so that's why you, you. Really do not, um, wanna rest on your laurels, uh, if you will, with, with the turnover rates for that because it is quite costly.
Excellent, thank you for explaining that, I appreciate it.
You bet.
Any other thoughts or questions? All right, anything else from you, Janine?
Nope, thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. So next up, we have operations, uh, Deb Callen's chief nursing officer. What do you have for us?
Uh, my report starts on page twenty-five. Uh, do you guys have any questions from? I do have a couple things I was gonna follow.
Oh, I was, does anybody else have any, have any questions? Uh, I was gonna ask, uh, your note on my page twenty-five EMS transport. We're having availability issues then with the transport. Is it that same thing where once one goes out of the county, we really could be shorthanded sort of situation or?
Yes.
You know, okay.
It's complicated.
Okay.
So KVFR and kind of, uh, way that the EMS transport is going with the LS is, is they don't. They don't, so wanna be called a two D transports for BLX in the middle of the night is a great thing, so. We have had some trouble with, with giving, um, patients transferred time late because of this.
Does that become? Making these puzzle pieces fit time-wise, an open bed and transport times. If you have an open bed, how long will they hold that open bed for a patient? If, if transport's not available until, say, seven AM, but that open bed is there at two thirty, maybe it won't still be there at seven? Is that a possibility?
I think I need to follow up on the reevaluate. They do reevaluate in a certain hour time and I don't know the hour. And to release the bed, it transports, but typically. A lot of times we are still gonna, that, we know they have a bed, accepted bed, but we just, what I can't answer, but I can bring it back next time is the time. The time that we're allotted and it may just depend on the hospital.
Sure.
And their availability, that their needs, that their needs change. We have law track that we can use and watch.
Some of a, I don't know, a particular case where they just need to go somewhere else for another image and then come back.
Okay, not necessarily a minute.
So we had struggles with getting that transfer to go get CAC, watch, get that image and then come back. And then that deferred the patient's care for a longer period because the patient had to wait until. Transport could arrive to get them there and then come back.
Does transport wait there during the imaging or do they leave them and then go back to retrieve them?
Depends.
How far?
On this one, it was a wait. Yep, but meantime, that patient in evening through ER and then they had to wait until the next morning before. Our EMS would be having to pick them up and transport.
Whereas it's a statewide and it's not just our area, yeah, the transfer.
But ALS, that's a, a go no matter, no matter when for them, they did think of it.
Unless they can fly or drive.
Right.
Yeah, it's still complicated, but, yeah, I mean, yes, I sent a helicopter over just to send it back. Rettinely as well, or ALS, the cars, yeah, if they're not available, the clinicians in the past. They have their cars around, so it's a definite trouble.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? Bob, any questions for Deb?
No, thank you.
Uh, my last will be, uh, the CNA training program.
Yes.
Got, uh, six students chosen. When you wrote this report, three had replied back for a February tenth start. Just curious if any more have replied back, because we have a full cohort, cohort at this point.
That's a good question. I don't know if Janine has heard. I haven't, I haven't seen any more come through for acceptance unless Janine's.
Okay.
Did she get off?
She might, no, no worries.
I apologize, um, I do know that, um. The prospects of who they thought were going to accept, they, they believe that they will. We should have a full cohort. So, I just, I see the acceptances come through from HR and I haven't seen all six.
Okay.
So that's why I answered.
Yes, so, thank you very much. Anything else for us today?
I was just gonna call out, um, that we had twenty dialysis treatments since the live in July and we are slated for tenth of the year, so that's really wow.
And it's, it's been working and it's been doing what we envisioned, which is again, if the dialysis patient came here before we had to send them away. We couldn't risk, then need it, and so we keep them. And so we've done twenty procedures of dialysis with, with patients we've been able to keep, so.
And shout out to the gentleman, the nurse that's helped start up this program, Wayne, so he, he has really been the rock and the. Doing a lot of the research, putting together protocols to start up this program and I do fully retire.
Yes, in March.
So.
That's not a.
I know. I didn't take it personal since I just got here, but I'm just not kidding.
We have good plans to. Actually, we're working the momentum going, but really thankful for his work and getting that going. We couldn't have done it without him. Very, very passionate about this piece of work.
And I think what's been really cool, and I saw this actually at a previous hospital as well. Is other hospitals are, are reaching out to us and asking us about our successes and how they couldn't also bring on dialysis in their. Critical access hospitals to do what we did, so we can share our experiences to support other hospitals, but pretty cool. Um, and then the new fracture table and art system, I can't remember if this was on last time, because we. Oh, that's how we know, yes, the art system and the fracture table has been completed, so, uh, anyone to make sure I thanked the board for that approval.
The first case I'm gonna add in is Monday.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Oh, cool, that's exciting.
Again, but.
First case with, uh, Everest.
Yeah, that's great. And the stretchers and rapid infusers, uh, infuser have arrived, um, and the training is planned. They just started it, it's actually sitting in the office next to me, so that, um, Cody and team wanted me to also thank you for that as well. Yeah. Oh, I think that was the foundation, also the foundation, thank you.
Anything else for you to say?
That was all.
Right, thank you. So moving on, chief ancillary officer, Rhonda Holden.
My report's on twenty-seven and I just have a correction to the pharmacy piece. They moved the Texas out of the Old Valley Clinic building. Into the surgical services area, but I don't think they've actually put it into OR four yet, because I don't think it's ready for it. And then, um, one of the most exciting things to mention is that wound care has now moved into the Old Valley Clinic or COVID Clinic building, so. Thank you to Wayne and the engineering team and to Jeff Yuma's IT folks for, um, making that happen quickly this week.
Wow.
Um, so we still have tomorrow that we can make everything look pretty and we'll be ready for patients on Monday morning. They're, they, they called the Valley Clinic the Taj Mahal.
Didn't they say that when they moved in the Peds too?
They remember when they were in a S P behind a curtain, so they're so grateful to have.
That was a small space, because it, because there was a patient there and. It's nice to see them.
Yeah. And they're so happy and it's going to be so much better for our patients, um, walking on that. You know, brick cobblestone wasn't even and the wound care patients have a hard time with mobility, so, um, falls are always a huge concern for them. So the, it will be much easier for them to have access into this building and they're thrilled.
And on that one, I think so Wayne and Aldrich, they made some accommodations so that in the interim, those patients could, didn't have to walk as far. Certainly had that whole west side for a lay down yard there fenced off and were able to move that around, so they could park there really closely.
Excellent, yeah, Aldrich was very good to work with us on it, so.
That's good, yeah, yeah, they've been wonderful.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Any questions for? Bob, any questions for Rhonda?
No.
Um, I was just gonna ask, the, uh, your note under pharmacy.
Oh.
We have opened up two spots for a pharmacy technician. You got twenty-five applicants?
We actually ended up with twenty-nine and, uh, I think Nasser said that they interviewed the first two and they won both of them. They're not making it too far through their list, I think, so, uh.
Where do they come in at? What level of education do they have to apply for this apprenticeship?
We've had all different kinds, um, and Nasser's on, so he could speak to it, but I know one applicant was an EMT and it's like, really? You wanna, you know, that's, that's kind of a, maybe even a cut in pay. Uh, but if he's on and wanted to speak to that, what he's seeing.
Nasser, if you could hear us, if you wanna say anything about the, uh, the pharmacy technician apprenticeship program?
Sure, so thanks for taking, uh, yeah, we had twenty-nine applicants for that position, uh. The first go around, we had, uh, thirty, so pretty even, although we just closed that in eight days. So this is a eight-day run and we got twenty some applicants, fantastic. Uh, we had EMTs, we had, uh. Uh, professor's aides, we have, uh, vet assistants, we have, uh, an array of, uh. Uh, applicants, uh, for this position is just a high school graduate. This is an entry level technician training program. Um, but they do come, uh, nationally certified at the end, um, able to work hospitals or any of the retail pharmacies nationwide. So it's a highly sought out, uh, uh, initial certifications. So we have great candidates. I mean, we, now we interviewed five people and four of them we wanna hire. This is gonna be a tough goal.
Yeah, and, and how long does the program last for each, uh, each student?
Well, uh, it's a minimum of five months, uh, that's the minimum, uh, our requirements. The program usually takes, uh, anywhere from six to nine months to complete, depending on the, um, how the students. Do on their own, uh, studies at home, so the, the state, the state only allows a one-year. I stand on the program, so they can finish in about six months if they really want to. Most students takes about nine months.
And do some of these, uh, graduates from this program then, uh, stay with KVH when they're done or do they all move on?
Yes, um, well, the, our guidelines says that if there is a position, they are supposed to stay with us for a year at least. Um, both of the first ones, we, this is only our second class, last year or two years ago. We had the first class of, uh, two, both of them still with us and so we're hoping that the next two also stays with us.
Excellent, well, thank you for sharing, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thanks for your time.
Anything else, Rhonda?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right, moving on to, uh, chief of clinic operations, Stacy Alena.
So my report is on page twenty-eight, um, and just like to update cardiology, you've heard Dr. Nyak is starting early. He will be here next week, um, his normal schedule will be Tuesday, Wednesdays and then Thursday morning in the hospital to do stress testing. And Thursday afternoon in clinic. Getting them onboard and breaking them in next week.
And I know we had to push some patients because of the change. Are we able to start pulling these into these slots?
We are, what we've done is I've got two of my per diem nurses working over there, because we also have a nursing physician open. And they looked at through the patient logs, triaged the patients and are moving them in based upon urgency.
Excellent.
So they've, they've been doing a lot of work with that. Um, one thing I didn't, did not mention in here is Family Medicine Ellensburg now has three providers who are working twelve-hour shifts. So they're starting to see patients at seven AM and they see patients till about six-thirty is their last patient. Three days a week, so we've got three different providers now doing that for better.
Are the three in the same three days or are they spread out?
They're spread out a little bit, um, two of them on our blue team. Our blue team is normally off on Fridays and they're picking up Friday, so we've got two of our blue team people now on Friday. To help do some of those same day appointments and then the other one is Zoe on our orange team, so they've moved their days around.
How long have they been out this shift?
Will started in November, uh, Zoe and Carissa actually this month. Our plan is after second, end of second quarter to kind of evaluate. Is this working? What kind of vacancy rates? Are we getting no shows early in late? Um, some of the unintended benefits is we've had a couple of providers call in sick. And since we open at seven, we've got PSRs here at six-thirty in the morning, they can start making those phone calls out. When a provider calls in sick, so.
Yeah, this is just a creative way to provide. More access by a wider range of times that are available, plus listening to the providers' needs as well, so having the option to have that. That longer day, um, for a shorter number of days per week. Um, then also just utilizing our space to the maximum we can, so, um, a lot of fixed costs and just having buildings. There's, if the lights are on for longer, so they're using this.
Yeah.
I can see how that can very popular.
It's become popular. To three for the first half of the year.
I think they're.
Yeah, but there's interested.
They're waiting to see, okay, so how tired are you really after a twelve-hour shift? And how good is it really to have those four days off? So we're, it'll be interesting. And how good is it really to have those four days off? So we're, it'll be interesting. Exactly, exactly. Um, I'm open to any other questions.
Bob, any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to. Chief of Staff. Dr. Hoppy is not here. Are you having her?
So uh, on behalf of Dr. Hoppy, there are uh, two things to report. The first is uh, that the M E C met on the fourteenth of January and. Uh, heard her nomination for a new Vice Chief of Staff, Dr. Mark. Uh, voted in in the affirmation to elect him to the Vice Chief of Staff role. So he will become your acting uh, Chief of Staff. When he returns from leave shortly. So. The second thing to report is that at that meeting, the M E C also uh, reviewed the initial appointments of uh, five uh. Candidates and uh, seven reappointments as well and voted to recommend. The approval of uh, privileges for all of the candidates that you see in your packet.
Excellent.
Questions?
Any questions? So I I think you've all had a chance to review the uh, the appointments. So entertain a motion. Everybody said.
I approve to approve all these people.
Motion by Terry.
Second.
Second by Matt. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Hold on, aye? Any opposed? That motion passes. All right. Thank you for staying for Dr. Hoppy. And now. Chief Clinical Officer.
I'll report on behalf of myself.
There you go.
Uh, so my uh, report begins on page thirty two in your packet. Uh, as you will note, top line, uh, I have uh, left. All the reporting about recruitment to Janine. Uh, and then I will highlight the key. Recruitment successes you see written in your packet there. Uh, Dr. Nyak as uh, well as. Dr. Esco, uh, doing vascular surgery next month. Uh, we also have had some successes. Uh, as Jason pointed out, the E D A P C. Are it's a real win for us. Um, I also want to uh, draw attention to the hard work of those in the medical staff services office. Everyone has heard tonight about the work that they've done with their enrollment. Uh, credentialing and uh, helping out with recruitment. I think they've done a spectacular job in the last year and we're hoping that this next year is another banner year.
And that's that's another group we'd welcome out, being to sit in on, you know. To see what they do behind the scenes. Like you say, it's hard to imagine all that work that goes into getting this ready and stuff.
Lots of spreadsheets and telephone calls.
You know, so so we're always welcome to an invite to that sort of thing. Um, any questions? Bob, any questions?
No.
Uh, so Dr. Thomas, I was gonna ask real quick on page thirty three of the medical staff section. It's, you make a note, I want to highlight Reese Rhodes, payer enrollment, she's payer enrollment specialist. I just want to understand, so she's been working on the backlog of enrollments, has made significant progress. I just wonder if you can explain what that means, what what's, because it sounds like it's a lot of work.
Actually happening.
Yeah. What is it? What does it mean to be doing this?
It, there is a tremendous amount of work. We've uh, had a a number of uh, our providers who have had powerful enrollment and. Uh, those providers at some point have to begin seeing patients and we hope that um, over the course of time, when uh, we continue to buy these payers, they will eventually both enroll and. Uh, retro the enrollment back to the provider start date. So that's one of the the big criteria for for solving the backlog issue. We also identified a couple of providers who. Were listed um, as variably uh, participants in in different insurance programs. And so making sure that they are correctly enrolled in the program and listed on website lists. So that patients can find providers who uh, are covered by their insurance provider.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Yeah, just add some of the complexity of working through the backlog and changing our tactics. So for example, Regent's only accepts packets in a fax. And we'll fax it and then she started calling and following up. They'll say we don't have it to fax again. So we've gotten. Now we fax those packets every week regardless. So we just continue faxing. Hopefully we end up on the top of the stack. Guess that at some point. Medicaid, because of their staffing, they have changed to only accepting calls on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So at least has changed her taxes. She calls on Thursdays and sits on hold with. Uh, Medicaid every Thursday to just rebump our inquiries. So yeah, so that that's been a a piece of the insurance industry that's really changed in the last couple of years as well. So there isn't really any benefit. Her side to technically credential. There's also no governing body that holds accountability to that. We've reported to the O A C multiple times as well. They they tell us that they don't have any covering ability over that, but. We we're doing our best. So they they've done a lot. And then the collaboration that they've done with RevCycle over this last year has helped them to really see both sides of the equation of. One example of mistakes, one of our providers who just finished credentialing this last week is a huge win for these girls. She started January twenty twenty three. That's how crazy it is.
All right. Anything else for Dr. Thomas?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, Chief Financial Officer, do you need to put on your chief financial hat?
Yes, so. Report is me. Um. December volumes were were very well for the organization. Um, December, along with really quarter four. Was was strong. So we had a good month in December. We ended with total charges, says below the below above budget and it was above budget by one point six million. Forgot to circle above. Expenses were above budget as well, just due to that increase. And then also we just leave our books open a little bit longer in December to collect as much invoice as we possibly can to get into the December. Financials ending out the year. So shout out to James and the accounting team that they got all the financials in for. But it's still preliminary financials until they're on bit um, by a tighter close month in January as well because of the dates on the board meetings. But they got it done. Um. Back on the financials, we still are receiving the payments through the SNAP funding, the Safety Noticement Program. That's about a one point nine million dollar benefit. I just got. The um, estimated benefit for next year as well for for this year, twenty twenty five. And it'll be the same about one point nine million. And then that program is not slated to continue unless there are some acts of legislation. Otherwise it'll revert back to what we were getting in that benefit, which was about eighty thousand, sixty to eighty thousand dollars here. Um, so that that's been a significant portion of our positive margin this year. Um, recruiting success, just as Dr. Thomas mentioned, we've had a really good year this year with recruiting and it. And that's recruiting permanent people versus locums, which helps the credentialing as well. So when we have a locum, we have to go through all the same credentialing steps. In a much tighter timeline that obviously we don't always get the credentialing done before they can start an assignment and be out. Traditionally close to done with those. So. That that issue in twenty twenty three, really with all those outcomes created a big problem there. Um, all this resulted in the operating positive of nine hundred and eighty one thousand and a net positive of one point five million after we add in the investment gains. So that ends with a one point seven positive. Today. Uh, shout out to RevCycle again, because they have to. So December, they they ended November forty six point one nine in A R and they ended December with forty million, seven hundred thousand. Um, bringing that A R days down to fifty, fifty seven days. So that was their highest ever collection of fourteen million dollars. And. So it was because we collected cash, not writing off. Most of that is all from insurance companies. Um, so we collected a lot more from insurance companies from patients. It's it's just. Any questions on the narrative?
Questions?
No. It did approve two pieces of capital. So dermatology, new exam room beds. There's four new beds there. Three of them are replacements and one's an add. So we'll be able to expand our services and capacity there. A little bit by having that fourth room set up. And then bed access is replacing one of the beds with with this new one as well. And these are our standard beds that you see. In all of our clinics that we've had updated in recent years. The ones we're replacing are beds that were existing when we purchased. Or they came over from.
They came over from my.
And and in internal adult medicine, got all new beds as well last year. So. These exam beds are electric head adjustment. They go. A large range from the high. So a lot safer. They're more compact than the existing ones in there. So a lot more room to maneuver around the beds for the exam.
And they're on wheels, so you can actually move them around.
We play musical chairs around here, so we're always moving when it's our people around. So that's a requirement. Everything's on wheels. Um, any other questions on the narrative? Last one, just to call out Julie Kirkland's team. So she's the manager of patient access. She's always hiring new staff. Her her staff is like a real foot in the door for other areas. So. She hires them, gets them trained, and then right when they're all trained, up and running good, then. It's been RevCycle lately, snatching them up. Best of our.
Stars.
She's just been a real good sport with that. And she uh, really encourages her staff to to do that. So she sees that as good foot in the door. And it helps with um, just long journey and finding places for the staff, so. That's all I have on the narrative. The financials. Page thirty nine is the stats. So just noting a couple of key stats there. So. Again, such a positive financial month is highly due to good revenue and then just expense management. Revenue is highly driven by our clinic visits. So you can see we're over budget by six point one percent on clinic visits. And then year to date, we were just barely missed our total clinic visit by point two percent of budget. So a really good growth rate still over last year from eighty six thousand visits to ninety thousand visits. Uh, one thing to note on this today are, these are. Provider visits. So it's a patient seeing the provider. We do a lot of nurse visits as well, like a a lot. It would be interesting to track that. As some point, you you might know a rough number off the top of your head.
Yeah. Oh, gosh. I know O B has set up all the first visits are with the nurse. I think when I looked at it, it was almost close to a hundred visits a month.
It's a lot. Other stats, the E R, though, just a little bit below budget for the month. They're still running stronger than. The rest of the month. So they're below budget two and a half percent, whereas year to date, they're running at a rate of five, five point one percent below budget. So. E R was very busy as well. Um, and then everything else just follows those. Any questions on stats?
I mean, E R for a while there, we call them gangbusters. It's slowed down then?
It hasn't slowed down. It just, the growth rate slowed down. So we've tapered off. Um, we could introduce some of that to just. Who knows what? But some of it is rapid access as well, I mentioned. So I know we are getting patients into rapid access and they're saying, yay, she's writing all the E R. Um, we get all patients that can react to rapid access and say, well, I just wanted to start here because I don't want that E R copay. So they are using that rapid access as a first source, which is. A little scary, but it's something that they're.
All right, like it.
You have a question on this section?
Rapid access has some very busy days. Their volume is not exactly steady, but um. Want to say, what's the highest volume day? Was it over sixty or was it just?
It was just barely under sixty. I think it was fifty six in one day with one provider and one M A.
Yeah.
Whoa. And then like the next day was eight. So their their volume swings. Colin said they're probably getting close to maybe twenty five a day on average. And their performer really had them at thirty, thirty one a day. But that's still a lot of visits for one provider.
That's so many.
Yeah, a lot. So yeah, shout out those A D Is on on that day. Yeah, both of them. Both our providers are so Mary Dowling and those A D Is. And they've been rock stars, just taking. Taking the volumes from crazy day to. And that's difficult to come to work and not know what to, what what's coming out. So it's very different from having scheduled appointments each day.
Yeah.
We're also seeing increases on Saturdays. We're starting to hit the mid to high teens on Saturdays. And I know our staff have seen, shout out to Michelle's group advertisements in the movie theater for rapid access. So we're still trying to get the word out to patients.
Yeah, and they, the P S R at the front desk, I sat in there and she was just as awesome to not just intake the patient, recommend wearing mask, and then she's also looking to see if they can float them upstairs if we're busy. So trying to minimize their weight. If they're established, they'll be speedier and they have the open appointment upstairs. They're getting them up there. It is an area, we're keeping an eye on the staff volume, uh, potential investment in further resources there. Those days when I had one in hand, one provider and having fifty nine, that's not a sustainable level. And then there's follow ups the next day with labs and calling those and the provider has to do all those because there's no nurse in there to. Look at those labs and report those back to patients. So it's an area that we're evaluating the the current staffing support for.
It's uh, nice to see the count receivable days has gone down under sixty.
Yeah.
Because I know historically, up and went actually, they were down to forty days. But we're getting a lot better at our count receivable. We're getting the payments back a lot quicker than uh, waiting almost three months to give them. That's really good.
If you extrapolate out two more years, we hit zero.
Yeah.
They won't get into negatives. Before they even.
Yeah, yeah. So a really healthy number is around fifty. There's, you can manipulate it to get lower by writing stuff off, but we do hang on to stuff and even at least as she challenges for three dollars that we get. So. Writing off is really that last resort. They start getting too low.
They're 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 uh, doing really well.
Yeah.
Um, we should clap for them.
We did when they were here.
Yeah.
They, um, I think it was in September, I said, if you guys get forty eight million, then we'll all go out to um. Uh, restaurant and yeah, they're at forty, forty million now. So they beat it by eight million. So we've had to go out to dinner quite a few times. At their milestone.
Good investment.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, any questions, financial statements, balance sheet? Thing I'd point out on the balance sheet is we do have this line right in the middle, third party payable of a million dollars. So that is. Anticipated potential payment for the Medicare cost report. So also can look at as it's a conservative financial. Measure. So if Medicare cost work can swing either way, it it will either by a payable or receivable. For the cost report and I like to end the year with the interim financial looking as a payable. So that if it swings, it swings a lot positive.
One of the things that's helped us for many, many years is our payer mix and uh. It's not good to see Medicare advantage go up and it's not good to see our commercial payers go down. Is that? Is this trend concerning you, I guess, put it that way?
So some of the, yes, on the Medicare advantage is concerning. Um, excited to see. Investment in campaigning, just educating media on Medicare advantage to see if that trend at least flattens. So it's a pretty good increase there. Um, which is approaching kind of where. National is. So nationally, about fifty percent of Americans are covered under Medicare Advantage. We're not quite there yet. We're about twenty five to thirty percent are covered by Medicare Advantage. So my my goal for twenty twenty five is I'm hoping to see it just flat, if not decreased. Um, some areas that also drive this, rather than saying commercials decreasing is is Medicare is increasing. Um, we started our vascular program creates a lot of charges, about twelve million dollars of our charges. In point forward, vascular has a high Medicare mix. So it's not necessarily that we're decreasing in in the commercial budget, but we're increasing in other areas. But yes, we want to stay at a healthy commercial mix. That's where our margin comes from. Medicare, Medicaid do get a loss and then the Medicare cost report.
Yeah.
Bob, any questions on the financial side so far?
No.
No?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had just one comment on the investments page. So we had a good question during finance committee of why is there in the maturity amount? You have the maturity amount for coupons, so looking at like the second line there, four point five million. And then the column next to it, the investment amount, we paid four point, a little over four point five million. And it looks like we hold it for that period, and we're going to lose ten thousand dollars. Um so we, there's buying bonds at a discount and at a premium. This one we bought at a premium. It will mature for less than we paid for it. But during the period that we hold a bond, we do get uh interim payment every six months of that annual return amount. So we do end up positive, but that's not reflected in there to net total gain.
And you said we're thinking maybe add a column where you reflect, you had accrued interest, just to help it make sense.
Yep. And then unrealized gain and losses, if we were to sell that bond today, would we be selling it at that discount or premium?
Why doesn't nobody want that long?
Yeah.
So I got six more weeks.
Yeah.
And you'll be reinvesting that back at point three five again?
No. Okay, so at least everything right now is staying above four percent. So I'm looking forward to all those bonds that are a half a percent and below to maturing over a lot of them mature over twenty twenty-five. And then a little bit in twenty-six. Um and then hopefully we stay at that four percent rate. That's been a big driver of our positive margin this year.
Yeah. Anything else on the financials?
And James and I have a, our our plan is we we have about five million per year maturing. So that gets us out as far as twenty thirty-two, and we'll be looking at twenty thirty-three. So historically, we've never locked in for that long, but I think there's risk benefit there that we've balanced in in five million years while we've planned to mature. That's it.
Any other questions for Jason on financials? So you're, so they need to say?
Yep.
All right. Uh Michelle, Chief Public Relations Officer, if you're on the line and can hear us, it's all yours.
I am on the line, and I'm just trying to figure out how to show my face. There you go. Um, okay, a couple of things that I wanted to add to my report. First of all, uh you may have noticed there's been a few changes at the federal level in the last week. And I have been trying to, just a couple. Um I have been trying to pay attention to things that might be impacting us down the road. Um it it's a growing sheet that I follow every day. Um from marketplace insurers to drug pricing, to W H O, to D E I, to ICE enforcement, to every, you know, you name it. Um the bottom line right now is it's way too early to know how any of this is going to shake out for us. We are, we are watching it, um paying attention, and so I just kind of wanted to give you that assurance of eyes are on it um and staying in contact with that. Um the other thing I wanted to talk about just a little bit is we did launch our orthopedic campaign on January thirteenth. The um everything is live except for our Google Ads. Um Google feels that we have something on our orthopedic website that says we're doing experimental treatment. And we're just kind of narrowing down to what that is. So when you hear about ads being rejected and being reviewed and things like that, that's where we are. Um looks like late tonight, I I got some um further information, so we should be able, hopefully, to get that going next week. Um all of that being said, we've got commercials running in markets such as Yakima, Tri-Cities, Wenatchee, Senkadia um through traditional T V, during NewsHour, during Wheel of Fortune, um through streaming apps. We're on, um you might start seeing us on um ESPN apps or commercials on H G T V. The app that we use in Ellensburg to watch sporting events, things like that, ads are going to be placed all throughout that. Um I am on our weekly cadence right now with a company trying to outline the metrics, see what we're doing on our return rates. Um we are actually, I'm trying to get to my sheet right now. On the first week of the campaign, we've had just over, I'm just looking at these numbers, just over three, five hundred uh click-throughs on our ads that are on social media. So that's a good thing. That's what we want. We want them to come to our website for more information. Jonika is um the clinic manager there, and Ortho has created a basic um tracking sheet when people register for new appointments. It's just how did you hear about us? That's some of the best data that we can get in talking to them. So we're really excited to see that going um and expect to be able to give you guys some solid data at at the monthly reports. Other than that, I will take any questions that you got.
I'll just say I appreciate the tentative calendar of events for the whole year. Uh that really helps, you know, for those of us who like to plan ahead and make sure we don't conflict with anything. So thank you for for that and for uh filling in as as uh as time passes.
Absolutely. And you could add, uh we did finalize the employee appreciation banquet date, and that will be the first Saturday in December, so that is December sixth.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for? Um do you have the report in front of you where you can see it?
Sure do.
So your first page, which is page forty-seven?
Yep.
Uh you've got the the bottom uh graph uh with dozens of um of of names. What I'm not understanding is what does this graph tell me? Like um community relations, the high of eighty-four, eighty-four what? What is it I'm learning?
Okay, so what that is, is if we look, so when a project comes in, we look at what area are we focusing on in that project? So for example, the ortho campaign, that would be focusing on orthopedics. So the eighty-four on community relations is what I would expect to see. So if I'm doing um an event, for example, that gets us out at the farmer's market, that we're just talking about the hospital or something like that. Um that's the community relation. So I I like to see that. Same thing with H D one and H D two. Um because again, we're talking about systems as a whole or events that we're doing. Um where you you can, where we feel like we're not doing so much um education is when you see the things crop up there, like on signage, for example. Every move that takes place, every new service that comes in here, um every expansion project that's designing the signs, that's placing the signs, that's working with the vendors. So those take up a lot of time. Um and like you'll even see in some of our projects, those are some of the big things that are going on right now are signage. So that's just giving it, giving me an idea. There's not scientific. This is truly, you know, it's like, where do we feel like we're servicing um the organization or the different services? So that's what that tells you.
Okay, and could one uh event be assigned more than one category here?
Nope, try not to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Very helpful. That I understand a lot better, so.
No problem.
Any other questions? Bob, any questions?
No.
Michelle, anything else for us today, Michelle?
Nothing else.
Okay, thank you for your report. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so we are on to education and board reports. There's listed, you know, old business, new business. We have an executive session uh for real estate. Uh how long do you think we need for that?
Let's go with twenty minutes. I do tend to shoot it up with extensions usually, but we'll start in twenty minutes, and I was gonna throw on the shoe of my thing.
Any business expected out there? No action, okay? So all right, it's six fifty-eight, so let's go ahead and uh we'll adjourn to executive session at seven o'clock. We'll take a two-minute break, and then we'll go to executive session. And we'll return at seven twenty back in public session to adjourn the meeting officially. So um Manny, how do you want to handle Bob coming back on?
You've got another week.
Okay, so thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you.